Welcome to the March 28, 2022, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. I have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons, and help us to be united in making the best possible decisions and to be effectively carrying them out. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, you call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. President.
There is a strong possibility that Mr. Meinzler may be trapped out in the ocean, deep sea fishing. So, in the unlikely event that he is not with us, we will provide him with an excuse momentarily. Go ahead.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Webster? Or excuse you, excuse Mr. Meinzler.
Don't move.
You've got to stay. Then a motion to second discussion. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioner, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting on February 28, 2022? What is your pleasure? Excuse me, that would be March 14, 2022.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the March 14 meeting and dispense the formal reading.
Second. Then a motion to second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items, please step to the podium, and if you'll share with us your name and your address and your thoughts on an agenda item, we'll be glad to listen to you. Does not appear to be a rush to the podium. We are fortunate tonight to be swearing in another firefighter. Mr. Webster, will you do us the honors, please?
Yes.
Mr. Stoich, come on up. Any of you have questions? My understanding is of the historic Stoick business in Sandusky, that's great, we're looking forward, very excited for you. So, I'll ask you to raise your right hand, and then I'll break this into three parts, so just to follow along. Read until I stop, and then I'll start the next segment over there. So, please raise your right hand. I, Timothy Stoich, recognizing my fundamental duty as a firefighter in the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Timothy Stoich, recognize my fundamental duty as a firefighter in the City of Sandusky Fire Department, do solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession by safeguarding the lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter for the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America, the State of Ohio, the City of Sandusky, and to accept the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a firefighter for the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community, to be of influence for good, performing patrol officers and firefighters to the best of my ability to so help.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be of influence for the good, performing officers and firefighters to the best of my ability to so help.
Congratulations, stay safe. For those of you unaware, this is what we call our pending ceremony. Pinned.
Congratulations, Tim. Through you, President Brady, to the commission. Tim is originally from Parma, Ohio. He most recently took this job with Sandusky Fire Department. He returns from Georgia to take this job. He has his girlfriend and his father, his mother and his grandfather with him here tonight, or grandmother here with him tonight, and his seven-month-old son. As Mr. Webster said, his extended family did run Stoicks years ago, and we'd like to welcome him to Sandusky Fire Department and the City of Sandusky.
Mr. Stoick, you come from a great, traditionally great, family in and around Sandusky, the Stoick family, and you are joining a traditionally great operation in our Sandusky Fire Department. Thank you for taking on this challenge, and thank you for taking a chance on us in employment. We think this is a two-way street, and we know you'll be successful.
Thank you, good honor.
Thank you. And now, I'll tell, as I do most guests that go through this, you're not required to sit through two hours of legislative process. I'll give you two minutes to clear the room if you want to get out of here. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
While the room is emptying, I will note that it has become much easier for new police officers and firefighters to take the oath ever since Mr. Webster started providing them with a copy, or someone started providing them with a copy. I think the first couple of folks who swore in, you were supposed to remember it.
That's part of the task, see, as a Sandusky firefighter.
That does pose quite a challenge.
This is better.
No one gave me a copy, I'm kidding.
Next item on our agenda is a presentation on the First Energy Assistance Program by our Division Manager of First Energy, Negatus Katsaurus. I murdered that.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time this evening. I sent out the press release a few weeks ago, and Aaron wanted me to come to kind of give you a little more details regarding the First Energy Bill Assist program and kind of the programs that are available within the area for customers to hopefully take advantage of. Just click away. First of all, First Energy, we are encouraging any customer to reach out to us as soon as possible if they are experiencing any type of economic insecurities, or they're not able to pay their invoice in full. It's important to reach out as soon as possible because the memorandum for shut-offs is ending April 15th, so if there's any reasons for disconnects, those will be starting again, starting in April 15th. So, we do understand that there are customers for a variety of reasons, including pandemic, that are not able to pay their invoice in full, so we're really encouraging them to reach out to us as soon as possible. Last thing we want to do is issue any type of late payments or disconnects due to, you know, to back pays. We do have a quick, two-minute video, hopefully it works. Oops. Oops, sorry about that. I can send it out if it's not going to work. Oh, there it goes, okay.
For the frontline employees, the ones taking calls from customers, they're needing help. I do have a background in social work. I think it brings a little bit of the human element to our customers, to let them know that, hey, we are human, we understand where you're coming from, what you're going through, and I'm here to help you, but I'm also here to understand. I've been here almost nine years, some days are very hard. I've laughed with customers, and I've also cried with customers. And at the end of the day, if I've just helped one person, and I've made a difference in one person's life, it makes my job rewarding for me.
The COVID-19 pandemic, the restrictions that were imposed by the government, this affected a lot of customers who had never been affected by anything like this before. To be told, hey, I get you, I understand the stress of this, I can see why this is bothering you, I've been there. And at the same time, to be able to tell them, but I'm not there anymore, I worked my way through it. Life is often a circle, we have highs and lows, you might be in a low point now, but it doesn't have to stay that way.
After the customer talks to a representative like Thomas or Ginger, then I am working behind the scenes to make sure those funds are allocated properly. I really love people, and I know that we all need somebody who cares about what we're going through, because in life, we all go through something, and we need to, you know, reach out and care for each other. We get thank yous and appreciation, it's, you know, a customer calling back in to say, you know, I really appreciate what you all have done for me, or if it's that handwritten personal note to say, you know, I really appreciate the services that you all have and the resources, that's always rewarding.
Yes, individuals, if they do have questions regarding what programs are available, best thing to do is to go to our newly designed webpage for this, which is www-firstenergycorp.com/bilassist. There's a form on there that they can fill out, which will point them directly to a customer service representative that can help them, or they can call the 800-633-4766 number to get ahold of a representative immediately. There's four main programs that are available. The first is the PIP, which is the Percentage of Income Payment, which allows customers to pay their utility invoice based on a select percentage of their income, and if they're able to do this over a, you know, 24-month period, the remaining back balance is voided out. The other one is the Home Energy Assistance Program, or HEAP, which is a cash grant that's available for home heating or for other emergency utility purposes. And there's a winter heat program and a 12-month program, so there's two different ones of these. 211 is pretty common, I'm sure a lot of people have heard of that. It's like a, basically a hotline that customers can call, and you can either text in or call into that number, and it provides you with some sort of programs that are available in that area regarding utilities, or a variety of other topics as well. And the last is the Ohio Edison Project Reach, which is an emergency hardship fund sponsored by Ohio Edison customers and employees, that's via the Salvation Army. So, basically, we're asking you all to, you know, spread the word. April 15th is when the memorandum ends, so we want to be able to help any customer that, you know, does need any type of assistance, you know, we want to make sure that customers are aware there are options available to them, so. Any questions or anything?
Commissions or questions, Commissioner? Appears that this program is largely centered around communication. You need to hear from, you need to hear from your customer, and you have a multitude of programs that can help them, nobody, you're providing a safety net.
Correct, yeah, like I said, we want to advise everyone to call the customer service number, you know, for, if they need help in any which way, you know, we want, you know, we understand, you know, there's a lot going on in the world right now with the pandemic and whatnot, so we want to make sure that they know there's help available, so.
Thank you.
Anything else First Energy, Ohio Edison related while I'm here? Well, if you need me for anything, you know, don't hesitate to call, so I'm happy to help.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Next, we have a presentation on the use of our Mills School for a temporary city recreation center by our own Jason Worling and Tandra Frisby.
Go from one type of energy to another.
Yeah, young energy.
Yes.
Looks like you have some support in the crowd.
I do.
Average age, I think, for a commission meeting has gone drastically down. Commissioners, thanks for letting us speak. I promised we wouldn't speak longer, like for a sewer change or a road servicing project. I said five minutes, we'll be out of here, but we're really excited to actually get in front of you all and tell you about kind of this exciting opportunity that we have with Mills School. As you know, Mills School was a elementary school that was just vacated this December by Sandusky City Schools. The students from there went to the Sandusky Early Learning Academy, which was a former Hancock site, and we saw a, an opportunity to continue the program that we've been doing and have a dedicated place to do that programming. At that same time, 222 MEGS, the former city hall, whereas our current home is, as you know, going under a construction project for the Justice Center, and they're going to need that space when they're transitioning the courts and the police from place to place, so we thought, what better time to find an empty school building to do some programming? The lease is a three-year lease with two single-year options for four and five. That timing is basically because of the new recreation center that we plan to build in the city, this space gets us there, whether that's three or five years. We would be using the space for our staff, Tandra and I, and Annette, right now, and also our, we have some part-time staff, we're going to use it for youth and community programming, kind of continuing the things that we've been doing, but also add in some things that maybe we've lost the past couple of years with the pandemic. And also with the South Side Plan, we wanted to, it's a perfect opportunity to use that space for those activities to engage the community and have some neighborhood programming as well. Tandra can talk a little more detailed on what we have planned going even today.
Yes, today was the first day of our fourth annual spring break camp, and we were excited to be able to do that in the new location. We had over 100 kids registered, and today our count for the actual attendees were over 80, I think it was like 83 kids showed up, and it's kindergarten through, well, five through about 14, 15 years ago. Those camps are spring break, and we do winter break camp as well, and we are so grateful for the Sandusky City Schools that's always let us use the high school to do those events. We also have Tap Fit with Tandra, which is a low-impact, new, innovative workout, and there's two spots available. You want one?
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Okay. We've got two spots available for that, that's going to be starting in April, hopefully, and then we also have the award-winning State of Ohio through the Ohio Parks and Recreation Program called Midtown Supper Club. It's going in its fourth year as well, and it starts, hopefully, next Monday is when we kick off for that. Two classes, both classes are full, and that's what we're doing right now, planned. Summer break camp, so we've always had winter break camp, spring break camp, now with the opportunity to be in a location that can hold the amount of kids that register, we will introduce a summer break camp, we will be at the Mills location. Safety Town also will be a, it's going to be pretty cute, the way they set that all up, I don't know much about that.
We'll bring back Safety Town, hopefully some grant funding and some collaboration there.
And we're looking for funding to purchase, I believe, eight sewing machines to bring "Make It So Easy," which is another program that was located at the facility that Stephanie Brown Mayfield runs out there on Route 250, but to bring it in closer and make it more attractive and engaging to the neighborhood, "Make It So Easy" will be housed in that facility as well.
So, as we get even further down the line, we want to do our winter break camp there, out-of-school programming, we say out-of-school programming because it's not just after school anymore, it's when we have like waiver days, or there's days when it's professional development days, we plan on having programming at the school during those days, winter break, spring break, summer break, the normal, and then weekends as well. We'd like to offer, so we have a rec room at 222 MEGS right now that we use for programming, we'd like to convert the library, existing library into a rec room, similar to that, so we could rent that out for birthday parties, graduation parties, bridal showers, baby showers, that sort of thing. And then also implement some senior walking programs, it is a pretty large building, and there's, it's not as big as the Sandusky Mall, but it's big enough to do some walking programs in there, have some multi-generational programming. And then we've also talked with some members from the Harlequins about possibly having some theater programs in the school as well. And have been approached by Dustin Sharp from Sandusky City Schools about, he's got a lot of clothes that were donated that can be used for youth, like that are going to be going for job interviews, or just need a suit, just to, so we've been talking to him about possibly using this space for that. I will say that with Sandusky City Schools, this past five years, we've used those schools as, and for these summer break camps, this year's spring break camp was not part of any of the lease, this was, they let us use this at no charge, and I'm guessing the spring sports were probably thankful for that, because then they could use more of the inside of the school today, when it was 20 degrees out there and blowing wind, so. I think that's it for this part of the presentation, Tandra, she had a little bit more she wanted to say?
Just real quick, so, good day commissioners, viewers, and our audience here in the commission chambers. Some of you may know me, or some of you may not, I'm Chandra K. Frisby, I'm the Youth Program Supervisor for the Sandusky Rec Department, and this is a day that we've looked forward to for quite some time, and are excited to share, where we just shared some of our visions with you and the details today. 12 years ago this month, I stepped into another vacated Sandusky City School, and you might remember Campbell School, and shout out to Dr. Richard Koontz, who named it the Nehemiah Center, and get well soon, Dr. Koontz. The out-of-school program that was created in that building became one of the most celebrated and impactful out-of-school programs in the City of Sandusky. From the experience at Campbell School emerged solid trusting relationships with our youth and their families. I didn't know then what I know now, and it's because of that experience we are so grateful for this opportunity at Mills. Fast forward to 2018, when I was hired as Youth Program Supervisor, if you look into the audience out here, we have young people, some who I first met when they were in elementary school. They would show up every opportunity that there was any out-of-school time, and guess what? They are now either continuing to participate in Sandusky Rec programming, volunteer for Sandusky Rec programs, or are seasonal or part-time employees for the City of Sandusky Rec Department. And that's them out there. Oh, I get a clap, Pat? Learned that by giving our youth a safe place where they can gather out-of-school time, with guidelines and structure in place, of course, that they feel safe, that they trust their environment, and they are free to create and express themselves. In other words, they thrive. It also lets them know that the City of Sandusky believes in them, supports them, and cares about their well-being. A big thank you goes out to Doc Sanders and his team, and the success of all the break camps from Sandusky Rec could not have happened without them, so graciously allowing us to use their space at the high school, and that started with the first spring break in 2018, and we'll be forever grateful. Finally, commissioners, we hope that we can imprint on your hearts to vote yes for this lease, yes for our youth and their families, and yes to carry on this winning Sandusky tradition. Bam!
Commissions or questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Waddington?
Yeah, I'd like you to tell maybe a little bit that we're going to have some outside stuff at the school during the summer, the warm months. Also, when I stopped there, a couple of the volunteers said, do you know who Tandra is? I said, I can hear her, I'll find her. She's got the squeaky. But, yeah, and the meals, are we going to continue that? And then like outside events, and then Midtown Supper Club, that's big now, and I think maybe a 30-second spot on that would help out. Because we used to use very serious for that, and I think now we've got a home, it sounds like, as usual, the kitchen.
As you know, there's a large field out back that we'd like to use for camps, soccer, football, those sort of things. The playground is still there, still in great shape. There's a couple basketball rims that we'd like to see if we can get, actually the backboards up there, but the rims aren't, so we'd like to use that. And then also with Safety Town being out there, I mean, that's something where it'll be a, kind of like that street grid where the kids get on their little bikes or their little cars and pedal through it and learn all the different things that they need to know for crossing the street and getting on the bus, and, yeah, Midtown.
Midtown Supper Club, with Brad Kraft is the food director at the Sandusky City Schools, is one of the chefs of Midtown, and he's actually thinking about entertaining doing a summer Midtown Supper Club, which would include outdoor cooking.
Kitchen's in great shape. And we'll continue doing meals there at school site too, right?
Yep.
You're on the meal drop-off, because that's important, especially right now.
Yep.
We don't know what the counting is going to do. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
You know, this came together relatively quickly, and in other circumstances, I would have said, you know, I think we need a more defined plan. But I'll tell you what, what our rec department has demonstrated over the last couple of years is you are resourceful, you are, you work hard, you are imaginative and creative, and you've brought so much to the rec department the last couple of years, you really picked up the game in a way that no other community is doing, and I think it's great what you're doing. And I have great faith in this program and this rec department because of its leadership, so thank you for that, and keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Jason and Tandra, you, thank you for the presentation, it's very thorough, you really did your homework as you always do, and it appears to me that you are, we are starting, you are leading us, but you are starting on the first few steps of what I hope will be a very short journey into a brand-new recreation center, but we're going to, we're going to be able to cut our teeth, you're going to be able to cut your teeth on this, refine your programs. Every program that you refine and make better, we will find a way to make room for it and transfer it to a new recreation center. This is not a substitute, this is just the first step.
Yes.
Commissioner Commerce.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if you ever thought about maybe adding some sort of introduction to finance, or small business, or entrepreneurship, or, and maybe partner with our friends across the street over at Echidna and bring them in?
Absolutely.
It's never too early to start.
Absolutely, yeah, that's one of the things that we've always, me and my husband, discuss it all the time, financial literacy and having those opportunities for our youth, and making this kind of thing normal, like seeing these young people out here, like making that normal to be in these kind of environments and arenas, and we have plenty of space to, I mean, it's unlimited what we can do at that school, so, yes.
Definitely. There's still two spots open for the Tap Fit program.
Yeah, don't forget that.
Mr. Chairman, really, I can't say anything much else, other than, you know, you all have, but I just want to say, it's just been such a pleasure just being able to be a witness to your guys' growth and an impact on this community, especially, you know, as it pertains to our youth, and again, to your point, Tandra, to see these faces in this audience is amazing. I know, heck, it usually feels like I'm the youngest in the room by far at times, but again.
Mr. Brady.
Yeah, but again, to your point, I hope we can see more of this, and as this, as, you know, Mills School hopefully serves as a stepping stone, I hope that allows you just to continue to reimagine yourselves and continue to expand your reach and your impact on this community. So, again, thank you for your great efforts, and, yeah, keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
Don't move.
Second. Then a motion, a second discussion. No objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have 11 items on the consent agenda this evening, I think that might be a record. Any of you wish to move any consent items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. U.S. Six Raise Grant Consent to ODOT. Number two, agreement with Sandusky Transit System for Cedar Point. Item C, priority field use for Lady Lightning Fast Pitch League. Item D, priority field use for the Amvets Baseball League. Item E, priority field use for the Sandusky Travelers Baseball Academy. Item F, priority field use for the Panther Baseball Club. Item G, ODNR submerged land lease with Chesapeake lofts. Item H, legislation approving updates to comprehensive storm water management codified ordinance. Item I, Shoreline Park and Paper District Marina Walkway Project Bid. Item J, Cleveland Road Waterline Agreement with American Structure Point. Item K, Fire Department Disposal of Tractor.
Commissioners, have you heard of these ordinances and resolutions? What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the approval of all of the items on our consent agenda, A through K, both the resolutions and the ordinances pursuant to Section 14 of our city charter.
Second. Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolution are passed. Commissioners, there are two items on tonight's agenda that are going to require more time, and I'm going to ask that, I will do it separately, I'm going to ask for a motion to remove from the agenda for one meeting. It will both appear at our next meeting, but we'll do them one at a time, and I'm going to ask that we remove item two from our regular agenda and bring it back at our, at our very next meeting. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion passes, and item number two will appear at our next meeting. I'm going to now ask for a motion to remove from the agenda and bring back at our very next meeting, item number nine. I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this one as well, because I have a conflict. This is a short-tail relative, so I will not be voting.
So noted. Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Both item two and item nine, that motion passed, and both item two and item nine will return at our very next meeting. We'll now turn to our regular agenda, item number one. Ms. Myers, will you present item number one?
Yes, Mr. President. It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a three-year lease agreement with Sandusky City School District Board of Education for the former Mills School building located at 1918 Mills Street for the Recreation Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? I think we've had our discussion. Ms. Myers, will you poll the commission on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed.
Yes.
And I will, I will repeat what I said with the firefighter supporters. Don't feel, I don't want any of you to feel like you have to sit through the next hour and a half of this agenda and listen to legislation before you saw, I'll give you a minute to clear the room.
But they're welcome to.
But you're certainly welcome to. Especially the guy in the overcoat.
Yeah, you especially go.
Boy, they were glad to get out of here, weren't they?
That's cool that they all came out.
Ms. Myers, will you present item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. President. It's requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Peely Islanders Stop Piles Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Snyder, can you just give us an overview of what, I think, I think most of us are aware that this was coming, but if you can share with us exactly what it is we're doing here, it would be helpful.
Sure, yeah. Commission President, the stop piles are effectively bumpers can be used as tie-offs for the boat to be backing in, giving it some guidance and keeping it, keeping the pier itself protected. So, that's the intent with these.
And my understanding from Mr. Klein's presentation at our last meeting that these costs are going to be recaptured and built into a continuation of a lease with the Canadian government.
Yes, that's my understanding also.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number four, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Haven Fund LLC to provide for the use of certain portion of the city's right of ways as described in the grant of a license for encroachment and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Pajali.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in, in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I should probably abstain from this, given that it's directly across from my office building. Just to let you know.
So noted, Mr. Murray. Comments or questions, commissioners? Mr. Snyder, this is a pretty, pretty common, pretty common occurrence with situations like this?
Yes, and, and the city has other encroachments with restaurants also, so this, this one in particular, if you can envision the face of landmark restaurant, we'll project eight and a half feet from the face of the building over the sidewalk and give them some outdoor space there. The width is, is the width of the building.
The view now will be of the bay instead of Water Street.
Correct.
Excellent. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number five, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement for professional design services with American Structure Point Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the Cleveland Road Safety Improvement Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Snyder, you are somewhat hogging the agenda tonight, so I'll let you give us an explanation there also.
Sure, so this is a continuation. The $263,000 number was already approved by city commission for a feasibility study, and that was required by ODOT. The rest of the funds here that we're requesting is to take us through detailed designs, so we actually have a biddable plan set for construction. Design is slated to take through the end of '23, and then bidding in '24, so this, this cost, it, it's steep, but the project's expensive, and you'll note that ODOT does have 95% of the, the cost in this. So, they're, they're very vested with us in, along in this project.
We're paying five cents on the dollar.
Yes.
Wow, I like that deal. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number six, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Precision Paving Incorporated of Mylan, Ohio, for the 2022 Local Street Reservicing Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Mr. Snyder, once again.
Sure, so you recall Precision did the, the bulk of the work last year's program, and so we're happy to have them come back to town and do quality work again. We're excited for this project, and, and they plan on starting as soon as asphalt plants open here, here in May, hopefully.
Mr. Snyder, from my recollection, a million seven, that is, that is a lot of money, but it is spread out throughout the city. As you look at our map, you go east to west, north to south, very generously, and I'm, I'm pleased with that. I've set off in times that you could spend a million dollars on road reconstruction, road paving, and you hardly notice it, but if, if you do that for four or five or hopefully 10 years, you're going to notice it. I can tell you our residents are noticing it now. So, we're not there yet, but we're certainly getting there.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I'd just like to point out also that of this money, this mil, almost a million eight, that 1.2 million dollars comes from the federal stimulus funding. Part of that 18 million dollars, very good use of that money. And then we're beginning to see the, the on-ramping, if you will, of the Cedar Point deal. That's the $100 million deal, that's bringing some funding. This is one of the first uses of that funding, $140,000, so that will continue to make a difference in our community. This is just the start.
Exactly. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number seven, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with C&amp;K Industrial Services Incorporated of Independence, Ohio, for the East Side and West Side Interceptors Cleaning Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Well, this one's so exciting, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray, perfect for you.
No one else will do it, I will. I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, and I am thrilled that you do not find, Mr. Murray, that you're conflicted on cleaning this interceptor.
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
It is important work to do. This does, this is one more piece that ultimately contributes to the water quality in our area. It's all has to work together, and I'm glad that staff is so, Mr. Snyder included, is so forward-looking in terms of looking at what we can do now to avoid problems in the future. We are lucky to have people that do that.
This was one of those small items, not a small item, because obviously it's a lot of money to keep it clean, but I recall that in, in our study that we had a presentation on a couple of meetings ago, this is one of the items that they recommended. They said, you know, flooding is not caused by a dirty interceptor, but it's hard to tell what impact that has. After this cleaning, it will have no impact. And that, my understanding is that cleaning is good for, it lasted more than a decade, so I'm optimistic that we're only going to spend this money every 10 years or so. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number 8, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with quality, American Quality Stripping Incorporated relating to property located at 1310 Cleveland Road and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wadding.
I was happy reading through the side of meat that they're going to retain the 44 full-time employment positions. I think that's good, and that's staying in Sandusky, so that's something else that we probably could have lost down the road.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole?
What's to be done with the existing building? What's the plan, if any at all?
I don't know if we have an answer for that. I, I do know that the existing building is not owned by this company that is relocating. It is, it is owned by a private individual or a company.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I too am thrilled that this company is staying in Sandusky, number one, and number two, that they are, have found a way to make use of a nearly vacant structure on, on Cleveland Road. So I think it's a, it's a great, it's a great fit for, for them, and I think it's a great fit for our city. We retain 44 jobs and hopefully more of those, and thanks to the Finneran family for continuing to believe and to reside here in Sandusky.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I just want to echo my appreciation for the investment. It's a substantial amount, $2.4 million being invested in a building that's being reactivated, so that's great. And I, just to, to note, it's 44 full-time jobs plus 10 new jobs, which is part of this enterprise zone agreement.
Dramatic. Excellent.
And if I could really briefly, through the Commission President, and I just want to thank Mr. Finneran and their family in that business, that this conversation goes back several years where they were outgrowing their space. They were very committed to trying to stay in the city and had a very hard time. In fact, I think this building was occupied by another tenant for a while and then came through, but we greatly appreciate your resilience and perseverance to staying in Sandusky and to continue to grow here with the community.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Now the Finnerans can get out of here. But you're certainly welcome to stay.
Just to thank each and every one of you. I spent my whole life.
Rick, come up to the microphone. That way we get you on camera, too.
I just want to say that I spent my whole life in manufacturing, every day. That's what I've done. And I just want, I never had the opportunity to go back and just say thanks to all of you here that spend your days and probably nights, you know, serving the community, serving the city, and doing what you're doing. So I just want to thank, you know, the fire department, the police department, city commissioners, all you people that are a service kind of company to the city, to the, the folks, your neighbors, your friends all here in the city. I just want to say thanks to you as well, because I appreciate what you do. I really do.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission Presidents, our Commission President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with a donation, a donation in the amount of $75 was received from Hank and Amanda Soloway in memory of Andy Dunn to the police department. A special thanks for the annual donation and recognition of Officer Dunn by the Soloway family. I'd ask for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks.
Also, a $500 donation was received from the Sandusky Rotary Club for the K-9 account. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Again, with our thanks.
I'd also like to request a motion to affirm Allison Will as a voting full-time member of the Housing Appeals Board. Previously, she was an alternate, and her term will run through December 31, 2024. I'd ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, the motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that appointment is approved, with our thanks to her for serving.
And then just a few updates. Staff is currently performing repairs to the walking bridges at Shoreline Park. The timeline for completion is dependent on the weather, which has not been working in our favor the last few days, but the bridges will remain closed until the repairs are complete. Also, the spring drop-off day has been scheduled for Saturday, April 23, from 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. We've temporarily changed the location to the old city hall at 222 Meg Street, just north of the tennis courts, to accommodate a, a regional fishing tournament that is scheduled, the boat ramp. For further details, please visit our website or call 419-627-5829. And then finally, for community development, the 2022 CDBG subrecipient application period has been extended to April 4 at noon. Staff are hoping to receive more applications in order to allocate all available funds and help more organizations. That concludes my remarks for this evening, but I'm happy to answer questions or take comments.
Questions or comments for city manager, Commissioners? We're getting off easy tonight, Mr. Wadding.
It's a quick one.
Items of old business, any items of old business, Commissioners? Items of new business, any items of new business? Mr. Wadding.
I looked at where we're at with the Justice Center. You all saw the box. In fact, I was supposed to get, I thought that gal was going to send me her copies of the design of it. I asked you that.
I have it in my.
That's probably been a month ago. But I'd like to know where that is and what we're, what path we're heading down, like if we can see a design or see what.
Sure, through the.
Because we got a hold on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I'd like to know what's happening.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Waddington. I know Director Klein's on vacation, but he's worked very closely with Assistant City Manager Orzak on this issue, and the design continues to move forward. I don't know if you want to speak to opportunities for the commission to weigh in before it comes back for a vote.
Yeah, through Commission President to Commissioner Waddington. The staff at Bowens is currently doing the detailed design, which is the plumbing, electrical, all of those very detailed things that need to take place in order to bid the project out. And I believe that is going to take a few more months, probably into the summer, and then there'll be an opportunity for the commission to weigh in on the project and when we start going to bid, which will be later this summer, fall timeframe.
I'd, I'd like to just, for the record, remind ourselves that when we started this process now several years ago, we started out with the need for a city hall, for a police department, and, and for a court. And we started out with an 18 and a half million dollar price tag. We have peeled off $6 million effectively off of that budget because we are now located in the structure we're sitting in now. So logically thinking from 2017, we're at $12 and a half billion is, is what we should expect. Now, I think we're all anticipating sticker shock. We all can read the news. We all know that inflation is going up. We all know that things are going to cost more money. But I would caution this commission to not suffer from sticker shock until you see the sticker. We have no obligation to go forward with, with, with any bid number that we're not completely and totally comfortable with, at least by a four to three margin. So I would just caution you to, we are, we